I pray to the legions, to the flag, and to the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, in the vehicle liberty and justice. Please remain in station for a state in the D.C. The fire team, anti-terrorists, over to the wind, all soon to manifest here. Thank you. Real call please.
Mr. Henderson? Mr. Petraselli?
Yeah.
Mr. Gattuso?
Here.
Mr. Colosseum?
Here.
Mr. Verducci?
Here.
Mrs. Snyder?
Here.
Mr. Shalzke?
Here.
Mayor Popey?
Here.
Mr. McDermott?
Here.
Mr. Brad?
Here.
Chief King? Chief Biscay? And Mr. Miller?
That's it, that's it, your form. Is anybody, uh, any, uh, topic on this too? They want to speak now or later, or want their pleasure, I don't see anybody.
They have the ability to abuse themselves.
Oh, they, they want... Debbie, you want to say something? You want to speak?
(laughing)
Anybody else at this time? Well, okay, then we proceed with our, uh, head of order.
New business number one, a motion approved the October 12th, 2020 regular meeting minutes as submitted.
I need a motion.
So moved.
Sir.
Um, Joe, it is approved.
All in favor?
All in favor. Any remarks? All in favor?
All in.
Thank you.
Number two, a motion approved the November 2nd, 2020 budget workshop meeting minutes as submitted.
All move.
All right.
Any discussion?
Any discussion? Any discussion on the motion? If there isn't any, uh, let's vote, everybody in favor?
All right.
Yes, sir. I agree.
Number three, a motion approved the November 2020 bill is...
All move, all serve.
Any remarks on that motion? Everybody in favor?
All right.
I agree.
Number four, a motion approved the November 13th, 20th, 27th, December 4th, and 11th, 2020 papers.
I need a motion for that.
So move.
Bruce and Joe, any remarks? Any remarks? Everybody in favor?
Uh...
Coats?
Motion carries, number five, a motion to authorize the advertisement public display of the proposed 2021 budget.
All move.
Second.
Uh, we should, uh, Verducci make the motion and, uh, we should, uh, second. Any, any remarks on the motion? If there isn't any, uh, I need a vote, everybody in favor?
All right.
Motion carried.
Number six, a motion to adopt resolution number 2020-17, determining and declaring three structures individually and collectively as lighted properties. This is for a CDPG grant application for the properties at 145 Livery Street, 146 Livery Street, and 105 Preston Road.
I need a motion.
So moved.
So move. Andy? What's the second?
Nick.
BJ, Nick, either one. BJ, okay. Any remarks on that motion? If there isn't any, everybody in favor?
Uh...
Motion carried.
Number seven, a motion to adopt resolution number 2020-18, authorizing the submission of a grant application to the community development block program in amount of $71,300 for residential demolitions.
I need a motion.
So moved.
Bruce and, uh, so, Jack and Nick, right?
Uh...
Everybody in favor?
All right.
Coats? No, motion carried.
Number eight, a motion to adopt resolution number 2020-19, authorizing the submission of a grant application to the community development block program in amount of $30,750 for Darby Way, Station Street catch base and replacements.
So BJ and Bruce, any remarks? Everybody in favor?
All right.
Motion carried.
Number nine, a motion to adopt resolution number 2020-20, appointing a delegate and alter the delegate to the Southwest Allegheny County Tax Collection Committee.
So he, sir, who made the motion?
Now, you?
Yes.
Okay, Bruce and Nicky. Everybody in favor?
All right.
Motion carried.
Number 10, a motion to adopt resolution number 2020-24, authorizing the submission of a grant to the active Allegheny Grant Program, seeking funding for the virtual active transportation plan project.
So the motion?
All move. I'll serve.
Danny?
Second.
And Bruce? Everybody in favor?
All right.
Coats? Motion carried.
Number 11, a motion to authorize the advertisement and public display according to number 1019 and ordinance establishing the 2021 sewer rates. The 2021 sewer rates is the Alka-Sin fee increase only. The new monthly fee is proposed to be $15.83 per one gallon gallons with a $6.37, uh, $6.37 per month customer service charge.
I need a motion.
So move. Bruce?
Second.
And Colosseum?
I make good heart. In our budget this year, we do not pay on the increase from the virtual side.
Okay?
I have a question, Joe.
Yes?
The, the, the service charge, that you said, that's just on monthly, it's not regulated by the amount of quantity?
No, that what, what it is, Alka-Sin has a customer service charge that's billed us quarterly.
Yes.
That's, that's purely all, Alka-Sin fee just divided up per month.
Yeah, but it's based, it, it's based just on per customer, flat, flat.
Yeah, flat, and that's in addition to the thousand gallons. The borough only charges $6.37, $6.73 per thousand gallons, and that's a change.
Is it clear now to everybody?
Yes.
I, BJ, uh, Bruce, and, uh, Colosseum, wait, uh, for a second. Everybody in favor?
Uh...
Coats? Motion carried.
Number 12, a motion to authorize the advertisement and soliciting for proposals for the comprehensive plan update project.
All move, I'll serve.
Mr. Verducci and Nicky? Any remarks? Everybody in favor?
Uh...
Coats? Motion carried.
Number 13, a motion to accept the lowest proposal received in a water contract to Sefanix Next Generation Contracting Company Incorporated in the amount of $20,500 for the repair of the concrete garage floor in the police alley portion of the borough.
I need a motion.
So move.
Bruce?
Second.
And BJ, five. Any, any remarks on that? If there isn't any, everybody in favor?
Uh...
Coats? Motion carried.
Number 14, a motion to authorize the urban engineer to repair plans, specifications, and bid documents for the Warner Avenue stabilization project.
I need a motion.
Can I ask a question, Kevin, please? Uh, I've got, I guess, a copy of this, this is the middle. I'm, I guess, Kevin, if you're there, there's a question for you. There's a label on the, on pass six?
Wait. Any suggestions on that? Kevin, are you there?
It's full form, I don't think it's on the off.
I don't think so, I, uh...
Yeah. Maybe. Yeah, I don't know where he is at.
Is he in the building?
I mean, did what?
He's not there, I'm getting him. Current area, there he is.
Kevin, are you there?
One second.
Oh, he's coming in now.
He must have got...
Stop, what? Kevin, there he is.
Kevin?
I'm back.
Yeah, question for the Warner Avenue, uh, pass number six. So, part-time resident project representative. With that request, the N.D. basis, accordance with exhibit A. I would have to do that. But services will consist of site observation, two hours daily, for an anticipated three-week construction period. And the cost of that is $4,500. We should like $150 bucks an hour. You guys hired off of that?
So... Okay.
Yeah, that, that's, uh, part-time for the duration of that contract. So, that person charges out at about $70, $75 an hour.
Can I ask why?
Thank you.
Why do we need this person?
Well, it's resident rep to stop in and, uh, check on the progress and get quantities and make sure they're doing per specification.
Yeah, but we, you have an engineer that, um, of the time, right?
No, this person just stops in part-time.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we don't, it's, it doesn't, it doesn't deserve a full-time person.
Are they from your firm?
Yes.
Oh, they are, okay, that's the res, oh, is that just, I thought somebody was on the street.
We were trying to decipher, it says resident on it. We're trying to decipher, put that back.
Oh, instead of calling them inspectors, we call them resident reps. And exhibit, exhibit A explains that it's the, uh, it's the inspector on the job.
Okay. Is it clear to everybody?
We're all about...
Did we, have the word of something here? Were we there?
Make a motion. I make a motion.
Okay, I need second, sir. Everybody in favor?
All right.
Yes? Motion carried.
Number 15, a motion approved the disbursement of $145,203.77 for partial payment number two and approved a change order number two to the Longmont Park Phase Two Improvement Project in amount of $10,782.37 for additional graded work that was needed to support ready site development and payment company.
Any motion?
So moved.
Any question? Okay, I need a second.
I'll serve.
Okay, Mr. Colosseum, may I speak, Kevin, Richard? Everybody in favor?
Uh...
Coats? Motion carried.
Number 16, a motion to accept the payment commission due to the October 2020 real estate tax collector report.
All move.
I'll serve.
Okay, Mr. Verducci and BJ? Any question? If there are no questions, any, uh, I need a vote, everybody in favor?
Uh...
Coats? Motion carried.
Number 17, a motion to accept the October 2020 police report.
All move, second.
Mr. Verducci and Bruce, right?
No.
Nick, okay. Any remarks? Any, any remarks? Everybody in favor?
Uh...
Coats? Motion carried. Community report, administration, Mr. Bob?
Thank you, Mr. Richen. Um, I'm happy to report that the admin committee has received its first draft and the personnel handbook. Um, I want to give a special shout out to Joe Loa, who worked on this prior to, uh, Joe coming. And with his input, uh, we're excited to meet the next week or two to give our primary review and comment. So hopefully, we can all have this, uh, by the new year. So thank you for that, Joe. Um, the 2021 newsletter sales ads have begun. This is the newsletter that we're going to be annually launching here that comes out in practice. Um, so that started and the articles have, are in the beginning stage. So, uh, I'm excited about that. In addition to that, we just had everyone should receive their quarterly community update in the October trash bills by now. Um, and in the tent to keep our residents informed about what's happening in the borough. Uh, this info is also posted on our website. And there have been multiple copies placed at larger public facilities in town. Um, maybe the Big Levee, the, the tower, so that residents have access to, uh, the information. About when you pick up, uh, shrub rate, things like that, certainly. Um... The design of the Borough WBE community message LED sign, um, has been completed and Popper Works is expected to install the conduit with the urbanized system and leave the Marley Lots to the Borough Board. So hopefully, in early time, we have the time to continue that.
I'm gonna agree.
Okay. And, um, I'm happy to, uh, to announce that new resident packets that we talked about a little while ago, that Joe listened to what we had saying, have been sent to all new homeowners buyers for the prior month. So again, thank you. This is something that are sent to, they utilize the real estate transfer list and send out the new page of, of the new, uh, resident packets to, uh, new residents providing the information about, you know, trash pickup, sewer leak, leak pickup, um, meeting day, things like that. And then last but not least, um, our copy of our permission lease agreements have been being negotiated and renewed. And, um, we'll send for thousands of dollars over the next five years. So, um, good things to say to, to all that. And that's all I have.
Anybody for the day chairman, or is, anything for, any question? Okay, if there isn't any, we go to finance, Mr. Verducci.
Uh, thank you, Nino. Uh, the general fund continues to be, uh, on track and actually doing very well. Revenue has, uh, been, was just shy of 97% of the budget and expenditures were down, uh, still at 81%. We do have some, uh, expenses that we want at the end of the year. So we're doing very well there. Uh, as far as the capital improvements, the loan closing, uh, will be held on November 12th. Uh, the funds will go directly into our capital funds account. They will be paid whenever those jobs are completed. And the 2021 budget is ready to go for inspection. Uh, that will be released when, uh...
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow. Tomorrow, that'll be available tomorrow. That's all I have, thank you.
Anything for Mr. Verducci, any question? Okay, thank you, Joe, good job. Good job, you guys, you, you, Joe, trying to come in here, but... Uh, quite a recreation, Mr. Colosseum.
Thanks, Nino. Uh, as we reported on the website, water is off the parks. So there's no restrooms around. Be careful, boys. And it's got, there's also the major research report, paving with block and park. We saw on the wall, this was a tall face. Dude, they had the chop shop, we found out in the lower, the wall. So I think we're going to, uh, contact extension water, paving, water, grid, and spread. It's supposed to take about twelve, I think it was, um, um, hopefully it holds on. Um, that's not the reason sort of, but then, uh, the toll, the voice got, we picked up on the bench.
Yeah, it is.
But then, yeah, I'm part of myself. Hopefully, so, okay, hey, uh... Uh, that's all we got.
Anything for Mr. Colosseum, this part? So which part was that, again, that's that?
The chop shop, what?
Mr. Colosseum, my, uh, vice chairman on public work, would you please read the, uh, the, uh, public work, uh, review, does it, so we'll read it?
In monthly report for November, the collection is ongoing on the road through the first week of the seventh. Police have disrupted the paths prepared. Please do not place any other yardways that restricts the grade or the grade in the rating path. Doggone policy speaks, we can sketch. Crash guards approve, collecting tree trimmings and limbs placed in current, fully magical event. All brush material must be no larger than twelve inches in diameter. It's supposed to include, uh, the... Class cutting of parks, ground properties, riding ways, abandoned properties contained. Utility companies clarify on street restorations, people, open street, open apartments for the season. They were also provided for thorough specifications without the road toll to store. Light fixtures on the firm of vertical, helping to help the green fence. Washington Avenue Street light electric. Police repaired two lights that were not connected on Station Street. New conduit installed, sites, roads, cars, and sidewalk to destroy. Lights in the 400 were, were, were a problem with that, on the front section of conduit. Crew replaced the second conduit on Station Street and reconnected the east corner street sidewalk. Electrician replaced service poles for Washington Avenue, Max Street, etc. Crew prepared a quote to replace another four service poles, once the equipment station. Park maintenance, water services, disconnected the all parts of the season. Crews winterized each park. Crew dressed up the men's game in a lot of zebra and trampoline park. Planned a new Christmas tree in the trampoline park. Equipment maintenance, new chop shop delivered, insured, details are in the paper, which is very clear. Salt, salt spread was added to the front trucks, ready for winter operations. Sign maintenance, stone gone, placed missing signs, they repaired the electrician. Ungone, baked, set, dedicated, filled puddles, repaired the walk-in streets, house. Clean catch bases with slails, dirt, panel, painting, eggs. The informant responded, smart, and reported walk-in transport vehicles on Halloween night.
Thank you, Joe, very good report. What a, what a job these few guys did, you know? I tell you what they are doing, good, good work. Now, let's, I have a question for the parts. On a nice day like today, yesterday, if the people still can go in, we know, we know we're in water, and that's what we understand.
Well, the lock was, our terrorists, we always try that, oh, beat them out. Some way to, uh, to, uh, to shut them out.
That is, well, that is different. Anything else? I think the open and the closed, it would be for the police to do as, I don't know, in that way, right? Even now, we get over time.
Maybe they're supposed to, you know, go lock it up in the morning, or... I think couple of works fair, they'll be up in the morning, between the last and all that. And we did that first thing in the morning, so they may have looked at that, please, for morning. The evening was obviously...
Yes, yes. Okay, thank you so much.
Excuse me, what are the times for opening? Same before, at seven, five?
There will be the same.
Thank you, any more question? Madam Mayor? How are you here? We are here in what place?
Thank you. We saw that our, the sister of our late mayor pathway, Dolores Stolby Davis, and there won't be any funeral service at her request. Also, on Wednesday, the 11th, Senator Arvino will be at the American Legion at Bonaparte. I'm anticipating, um, Tom Durk, Allegheny County, being there to recognize the Legion on November 29th. They will have been here as an organization for 100 years. So we can see the connotations for that. Thank you.
Anything for the mayor? Any question? Thank you, Madam Mayor. Police chief, James? He's down, he's down here, asked him? No, it's not reported, you know, about public safety. Public safety? Yes. Bruce?
No, I didn't say that. No report.
I haven't done this. I haven't done this for a long time, I'm a little rusty, I never... Something new after so many years. Uh, okay, now we can go to the police, it's not here, so is, Mr.?
Thank you very much, you have my word. Or, uh, just the note that the planning commission does have, and is reviewing the, um, the domestic check and ordinance. Um, as Mr. Verducci mentioned, it goes upon the schedule for this one standing fashion supply or solicitor letter to them as well. Uh, and, uh, the sewer regulator, this speaker, plus that, uh, this time I draft and do it. Uh, okay, I think you're fine with Mr. Geller, Richard, that's a kind of tried fashion. The rate section, especially so it's more user-friendly, it shows exactly what's the outstanding rate, exactly what the rate now is. And actually, those run scenes have changed on the virtual part. And we've done some things to kind of streamline it. Look, I've written over years and things that were all over the place, we put similar section. And just streamline the, uh, procedures for enactment and place as well. That's all I have.
Anything for the service? Kevin? He's here, you're on.
Yes, sir, how you doing this evening?
Pretty good, thank you.
We did submit our report dated November 5th, and as you can see, we have a tremendous amount of construction activity. Um, we do expect the road paving to be completed, uh, this week. Uh, and then we'll do a final inspection and close them out. And all the other contracts, uh, are going, uh, well at this time. Um, there is a delay in materials on the Janeway, uh, project. The logs take, um, about 12 weeks to get in. Uh, as soon as they get in, they will get started, so, any questions?
Any question for the agent? Thank you, Kevin. Archie?
Yes, uh, oh, anyone here on here? Uh, last one, we have thirty calls, uh, technical assistance, eight of them, both legal access, we have three athletes, two, uh, various, uh, calls, throughout the month. Uh, we also, from the letter, I know that many residents that jerk ass by having commercial street, see we have our annual, uh, slave and cash tickets going for sale. They are $20 apiece, and on the day of Christmas, equaling $10,000 dollars. It's gonna be a pretty cool Christmas gift. So, if you see any fire party, or if you see them at the end of our street, they'll bring, uh, supply, grab tickets, do much pressure. Also, on December, I think, 6th, we're having a pancake dinner down at the Barrow. With the, oh, breakfast, I don't know what's it.
It's on, it's on, it's there.
Yeah, pancake breakfast, uh, see our Facebook page, for all details, any events, anything coming up. Uh, we can give further details about that and everything. And, uh...
Anything for the, uh, Archie? Okay, the next one will be, uh, Delver, are you there?
No.
No? Okay. Historical society, very wise. Madam Mayor, do you have any important questions?
The program for November 24th will be day by day with 123 P.A. volunteers. Major Allegheny Regiment fights during the Civil War presented by Chris Stewart. She also hopes that we will stop and buy note cards. You bet we will also take out a membership and stop and see a certain holder basis. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, okay, we have now the library, anybody represent the library here or there? Nobody. Okay, it's on there, we're here. Uh, pointing at your... Nobody there? Bridgefield Mining Commission representative, one there? We have any...
I'm here. Justine's here. Can you hear me?
Oh. Oh, hey, you are not good.
All right, well, basically...
All right, well, basically what we were presented uh last month was a McLaughlin-run flood mitigation project for consideration. Most of the evening was uh set up with discussing that and the chicken situation as well as the police pedestrian safety report was tabled until December seventh. And that's it.
Any question? Representative of the fighting commission? Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, Gordon Bennett.
A couple of quick things, uh, so with your retirement, the public works department is February. Uh, the employment act for that vacancies can be ran in the newspapers and circulated later this week. Uh, the goal is that we'll accept applications through early December, uh, interview in December and hopefully have a candidate to hire before council or our January meeting so that the new person can be brought on right at the transition time for that retirement, employees departure. A couple of ground cases were completed this month, the C D P G enacted Allegheny Transportation Grant. Complaints are done, ready to be submitted tomorrow. And uh, the monthly report was submitted, anyone have any questions? So I can have any answer.
Anything for Gordon Bennett? Any question?
Well, basically, I have one thing. Um, at the end of this, we have, always have very white students, she's not here, have no report. Uh, and Ben, I know from the library comes up at least once a quarter. But I heard, and we always have somebody who will pay. But I really think that we need to always have a structure to make sure that each one of them maybe have a a presentation each quarter. Uh, we haven't heard from the parking authority for six months.
Yeah.
Well, almost a year, I mean, our goal was to have these representatives, that's why they're on the agenda. Um, I'd like to hear what's going on with the parking authority and some of the things that that have been going on, that we could at least have a question or two that I've actually held on to for at least four months. Uh, talking about the increase in fees and things like that that they're charging, which is fine, because they're making our parks nice and, and so forth, but I think we need to have some explanation of what's going on with the parking authority. It is part of the borough and I, I think the public deserves to hear some updates on them as well, just like the other representatives have done.
Very, very good question. I believe that you were informed by council, not under. The.
And I know that one or two of them are having some health issues and that there's other things going on, but there's more than just one or two, I think there's five or six.
Yes. Uh, maybe we should make that a case in policy. I don't know, under administration, under all of that, we should definitely add them. But for that, we. And down that country, no, very happy. And we would like that. Some kind of that. And we should, we, we, we deserve it, the people deserve it. Thank you, Mr. Verdi, very excellent, excellent, thank you. My dear. Okay, on the new business. Well, before we adjourn, let's say happy Thanksgiving, happy it's coming up. Everybody, every, every family. Thanksgiving. Motion to adjourn, so. With the best, yes, sure. So.